All right, I'll call it a order, the Town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for October 11th, 2023. Oh, and we're already getting an echo. Hi, Meredith.
Hey, Bill, thank you for the warning.
Yes, so I'm gonna make it. Just feeling a little cruddy, so thought the mask would be appropriate. And let's get the show on the road here. I'll start off with introductions. William Hanley, Planning Board Chair. We've got Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller in the room with us. We've got Meredith Randolph online. And Dave Ashmore online. And let's start with the whole Zoom spiel. I hope everybody knows this by now, but if you are on Zoom, please sign in through chat. Everybody I'm sure knows the protocol of keeping your your mic yourself muted until you speak. What else? You know, the chat isn't a a discussion forum. It's just we it really helps with the recording minutes if you sign in on chat, please. And, you know, we've got, you know, good sized crowd here in the meeting room as well as everybody online. We'll do our best to include everybody when or if we need to include you. So if you have your hand up, just hold on, we'll get to you. And let's do it. So item two on the agenda tonight, we had minutes from nine, nine thirteen and nine twenty seven. Both Tracy and I haven't had a chance yet to read the nine twenty seven minutes, but still have them. But I think we should have finding on the nine thirteen minutes, though, please.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to adopt the minutes as presented from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Meredith Randolph, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
And myself, William Hanley, I. Right, soldiering on. Item three, we have a subdivision approval application tonight. And this is a continuation from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty three. We are having a public hearing at six oh five PM and the and it's subdivision oh oh two twenty twenty three. Owner name is Mount Desert three sixty five, Aiden Craig Johnston, GF Johnston Associates. Location five Manchester Road, Northeast starter, tax map twenty three, lot twenty five, zoning district, Village Residential One. And the purpose is subdivision asked to find in the construction or placement of three or more dwelling units on a single tract or parcel of land within a five year period. The proposal is a construction or placement of six dwelling units on a single tract or parcel of land within a five year period and its workforce housing. And I'll first ask if there's any conflict of interest on the board. None heard. And again, this was a continuation from September thirteenth, when the applicant asked for it to be tabled to a date certain, that date certain being today. So I'm going to turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we were here on the compatibility issue. We're moving forward to make sure there's a discussion around the clear terms of compatibility of permitted uses in the district. So we we hope that comes out with the findings of fact. Kathy was traveling at the time we had our last hearing. It's good for us to re-group her. I appreciate the time the board has given to us to do that. And with that, I would like to continue hearing, but I think Kathy, I have a few words if we may just as we start things off.
Can you sign in? And my few words are just to say thank you for letting us put a pause on this. We heard what you were saying. We came back and regrouped and reflected on all of that. And we feel that our application should stand as is, that we believe that the the density bonuses would allow us to have six dwellings on there, and we want to continue with that. And so thank you for giving us this pause. We think that everything we presented should meet the standards and welcome, welcome to review.
Thank you. Andy, any words before we get going?
Yeah, I was reflecting on the last meeting. And the way the board started into the six A one review compatibility with the permitted uses within the district in which it's located as measurement as measured in terms of its physical size, visual impact, proximity to other structures and density of development. And we were doing a pretty great job, I thought, of focusing mostly on quantitative, we slipped into qualitative a little bit. I don't think that's the only consideration is quantitative versus qualitative compatibility.
Can I get you to sign in?
So I looked at what you've already done, and I agree with the board that four point two point four where the applicant for a subdivision review.
You're referring to the subdivision ordinance?
Yes, this is, I'm gonna start now strictly with the subdivision ordinance, because that's primarily where your review is. But four point two point four says information showing conformance with user and subdivision ordinances. Says the applicant shall submit evidence to the board to show compliance with. And so that's part of the review that you did previously. The board said, well, we didn't exactly make final findings on that. I submit to you the language says what it says, but here I'm using four point two point four just for context. When you come back over to your review under five point two. Congratulations to the board, you completed five point one. We were just under five point two of the subdivision ordinance. And that's what then took us over to six A. In some ways, I think we jumped too quickly to six A. It says the proposed subdivision shall be in conformance with all pertinent local, state and federal ordinances, statutes, laws and regulations. I've seen these zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance provisions before. There's what we call the kitchen sink provisions. Basically, the project goes into the kitchen sink on all the considerations that you might find that are relevant to the review of a project, get reviewed under five point two. And then it goes on to say if the proposed subdivision meets the definition of the subdivision as defined in the Site Location Act Title thirty eight MRSA, section four eighty two, the subdivider must secure the approval of the State Board of Environmental Protection as well as the board, meaning the planning board. Actually, that that language is pretty old and stilted. The State Board of Environmental Protection ain't reviewing many projects under the Site Location Act, the staff reviews those. But that's that's how that's how omnibus this provision is. It's it's designed to be cumulative and capture everything. Goes on to say when a proposed subdivision requires approval of the board and the board environmental protection, each review may be conducted in the and the board may deny approval of the subdivision even though the board of environmental protection has granted approval under the provision of the Site Location Act. When people need context, they need context. I think this board review right now needs context. Five point two isn't designed to say you gotta meet the letter of every standard that may be relevant. It says it's gotta be in conformance. There is a term that's used in both main statutes and zoning ordinance that's that's the word consistent. Your 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 zoning amendments have to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. The law court, interestingly, has construed that term consistent to mean not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And so I submit to you, conformance is not exactitude. And it's certainly, as we've talked about under six A one, it's really trying to get at general performance standards. That's what six A is, general performance standards. And I knew we'd get hung up on one. That's why I kept saying, why don't you do your your review in light of the fact you've already been through four point two point four? You persuaded me that you had to do the six A one, but I think the mind immediately went to the precision associated with, you know, all of our professional endeavors. We bring our experiences of life to the to the table, and you you start to say, I know what compatibility means. It means exactitude, and it doesn't. Conformance and compatibility are terms that are used to to provide generally art sticks, not precision. And so I think on the quantitative side, we were using precision. But this is principally a project that's reviewed in a subdivision ordinance. We were almost doing the generic site plan review and trying to measure aspects of the physical site as though we were doing site planner. And I just I want to bring us back to the context of the subdivision ordinance. This is a subdivision review and five point two looks for conformance. If you look up the term conform in the dictionary, you're gonna find it isn't exact precision. It's 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 general consistency, general conformity. So I wanted to give you that context because I noticed it this afternoon when I was looking back at what are these questions we're trying to answer with this particular project? They're they're not precision, they're they're conformance. And any law court review, if this goes that far, is gonna have to look at the plain language of your ordinance. You're bound with the plain language of your ordinance. So I just wanted to suggest that the board was doing a pretty good job of looking at quantitative standards. When we moved over into qualitative, the law court's been clear, if you're substituting your independent individual judgment for the legislative body, specifically the standards, that's when your review's going sideways. And that's why I kept trying to bring you back to focus on the quantitative. But I also want to give you those contextual words, conformance and compatible, which are not exactitude terms, they're not precision. They're 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 general conformity, general consistency.
Yeah, and I think the, you know, the the challenge of six A one is it has whispers of qualitative review or discussion. And, you know, and, you know, again.
That that darn ordinance review committee should take a look.
Yes, where are they?
God, you should get after them and tell them to take those subjective terms out of the ordinance. They have no place for a competent planning board review.
So I I don't feel like the board got off into the weeds with qualitative discussion. I think there were some whispers of that. I think that the, you know, the board fully acknowledges, and especially from its experience over the years that the, you know, we're we've got the bumpers in the lanes, and sometimes the discussion does bounce off the bumpers. However, we know what what pins we're aimed at here. And we're, you know, we're we're aimed with, again, the subdivision ordinance. Section five, we're aimed with section six, the Luso, and then section four four oh four of the state standard. You know, and what what and what I'm doing here is I'm just kind of recapping where we're at. So where, you know, as we process through section five one of the subdivision ordinance made into the five two, five two kicked us over to six A one compatibility. And on the thirteenth, you know, we we had a pretty healthy discussion through compatibility where the board, we didn't have specific findings of fact and conclusion law for each components of compatibility. But from the minutes, you can see that we made it through. The board was unified in their position on physical size, visual impact, proximity to other structures and density of development. And then we had the the recess at the last hearing. And then when we came back, you know, one of the first questions, and I'm just kind of tying this into your opening remarks, is that we do circle back to density of development discussion in five seven three. And I think five sixteen two.
Correct.
So, you know, if we were to follow that recommendation, Andy, you know, I just want to reassure the applicant and everybody else from the public involved is that the the density of development discussion continues.
Yeah, there's two other sections in the subdivision.
Yes, correct, correct. So, you know, we were you know, so trying to parse where we go from here, but, you know, part of me says, hey, look, we have the momentum on six A one, you know? We had one remaining, you know, key component, you know, in motion. You know, the density of development discussion and just wanted to get a sense from the board first, kind of, do we round out six A one in that density of development discussion and soldier on then back to do we go back to section five three, Andy, or do we go through the we go through the rest of section six?
I think there's a few questions really involving conformance with state laws. There's really, you know, federal ordinances, federal laws that I'm concerned about here, but there are some state laws where I just want to make sure the board has the chance to ask the applicant about conformance of Site Location Act and what the plan is.
Yeah.
Still for that, I they they may be exempt from any Site Location and Development Act review, but if you look at five point two, about three quarters of the words in five point two are tied to the main Site Location Development Act. But I do agree with you. I think your the board was almost on the six A one where you might want to try to work through with the board.
I so my my feeling is, and again, I want to hear it from the board, that, you know, we need to round out section six A one compatibility. Section four two four, the subdivision ordinance does mention that we need to go through section six of Luso, and I think we, you know, look, we're in section six, let's push through it. And, you know, the the you know, a lot of sex, section six is pretty pro forma review. So where where are we, guys? Where do you, how do you feel about that game plan of pushing through six A one and and rounding out the review of section six in the land use ordinance before kicking back to the subdivision ordinance, which is spelled out in the subdivision ordinance in four two four already?
I think it makes sense to do it in that order.
Meredith, what do you think?
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Right. Dave?
Sounds good to me.
So here we are in land use ordinance, section six A one compatibility. Let's just recall what we're we're reviewing here. The six A one compatibility, the strike in land use ordinance is that the proposed use shall be compatible with the permitted uses within the district in which it is located as measured in terms of physical size, visual impact and proximity to other structures and density of development. So we made it through the first four. We're in the density of development discussion. When we rounded that out on the thirteenth, we were kind of processing, you know, the calculations of six versus five and you know, and just, you know, everybody's familiar with the minutes and how we process that. And I guess what what I'm trying to find here is some ground to stand on, Andy, and how we, you know, how we round out the discussion of that. And that the goal of this is to have a findings of fact and conclusion law in section six A one. So we can get a motion on the table.
Yeah, and I've suggested a kind of a three part approach. You've already done the first part, which is you read the standard. Against that standard, if you would, with your board colleagues, work on what's the substantial evidence? Either from the application, any supplemental submissions, any testimony, applicant, interested persons that you would rely upon, substantial evidence of conformity with the standard are found where? So just call out where in the application or in the testimony you found substantial evidence of conformity or not with the standard.
Perhaps the applicant could point us to the page in the application where the density of discussion calculation was and it's page forty one through forty four, if I'm not mistaken. And this is the final plot plan submittal from July fourteenth from referencing.
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking at any supplemental information, is that where you?
Yes.
Yes.
Seventy two to thirty four.
Yeah.
All the board members have that. Before then, maybe we'll just take a moment. And then comment on anything that we think is helpful as a board.
Like to note and make sure the board has a copy of the presentation PowerPoint that showed this neighborhood in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood in terms of density of development. It was presented and then turned in at the same time as the supplemental submittal. That might give you some guidance if you looked at the calculations. If you have that handy as part of the record, that may help us.
Do you have a print of that? For instance?
Not sure.
Do you have that on your board there?
I could put it up on the screen if you want.
And she?
I can give you a hard copy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Remember seeing that presented at the public hearing on June fourteenth, and then I gave Kim ten copies of that.
Thank you.
Maybe this is it.
This without coverage. Do you can she share that on the screen? Is that possible? Kim?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
And you should have your attorney.
Would it be beneficial to share that on the screen?
It's really, I mean, we're in deliberation, so it's really for the board's benefit. I find that hard copies for the record are the most helpful. And
you guys, Meredith, Dave, you guys remember this, just the density of development comparison here in town?
Yeah, I recall it.
Maybe Kathy or Greg could just summarize it again for the record.
Yes. We were looking at two items on that square footage of structures, a home and the number of bedrooms, since those seem to be the main concerns. And so we start with the property on our own property, Heel Way.
Yep.
And looking at the the square footage of the home structures on there. And on any of these properties, we were not including a garage unless there was also a van. So these are structures where people are living and looking at the square footage of the the footprint of a building. And all of this information was taken from the town real estate database. So that's that was our guideline. And then we would count the number of bedrooms and then make a comparison acre to acre. So our property is a little under one acre. We have sixteen bedrooms, but if you round it out to an acre, we've got seventeen point seven eight, so eighteen bedrooms would be our square, our number of bedrooms we have. Then, so that was the base map. We have point nine acres, six homes. It was forty six hundred and four square feet per acre or eighteen bedrooms per acre. And then we started looking at other parts of the neighborhood. So we, the first comparison was on four different lots, four homes on Nursery Lane and Summit. And they have actually only sixteen bedrooms, but a higher number of square foot, but footprint per acre. And then we moved to another neighborhood with Lookout Way, four homes on point five one acres. So on an acre by acre basis, that was six thousand plus square feet and twenty five bedrooms per acre. Then we went to another neighborhood, looking at Summit Road, Lookout Way and Church Road. So there were eight homes on point nine two acres. And so the comparison acre to acre would be sixty three hundred and forty eight square feet and twenty bedrooms. Both of those higher than what Heel Way is. The next neighborhood was the street down Maple Lane backing up to Tracy Road. So six homes on point nine seven acres, again, over five thousand square feet per acre and twenty four bedrooms per acre. Then coming over to Rock End Road, seven homes on one point three three acres, over seven thousand square feet per acre and twenty bedrooms per acre. Then neighborhood and Graves, Neighborhood Road and Graves Lane, four homes on point eight four acres and over five thousand square feet per acre and twenty bedrooms per acre. And then the final one was across the street, two properties on Manchester Road, so four structures on point five five acres, over eight thousand square feet per acre and twenty four bedrooms per acre. And then the final page was all of those listed in the order from highest to lowest acre, square foot per acre. And Heel Way was the lowest part.
So this?
This is a demonstration of that kind of density. It might seem dense to some, but when you're looking at the footprint and the acreage available, this was the lowest one compared to those other seven areas of the village.
And this was a density of development study in the Village Residential One District. And that the study took into consideration densities across multiple properties.
Yes. So it was on each of those pages where in layout what street it is, it tells you the number of properties that it was looking at.
So thank you. Any thoughts, Meredith? Dave?
I I think that they have shown that it's that is compatible. I don't, I think that this section we've never scrutinized things to quite this extent for the I I just think it's it's a it's a more general section. And I said, I'm happy to discuss the density and other sections, but for this section, I think they've satisfactorily proven that it's compatible.
Can we talk a little bit about
Can I get you to sign in?
And I'm not not trying to stretch the discussion any longer than it needs to, but, you know, the context of of density of development and compatibility. You know, as we've been as we've been rolling through the review of section six A one, and, you know, we've looked at physical size and, okay, physical size, you know, we were looking at the, you know, just the dimensions of a lot and kind of quantifying that and referencing the submittal in the application. And then we went on to visual impact and we looked at the renderings they had provided and the exterior information of the the buildings being proposed and the the other miscellaneous development on site, you know, and reference the plans on that. And then the proximity to other structures, again, we had a site plan and all that. And now density of development, we have you know, their their calculations submitted on the supplemental information, page forty two forward. And we've got the previous Heel Way subdivision. And we've got the previous heel way subdivision, um, density of development. Packet we just went through. You know, we're, when we're talking about compatibility with the permitted uses within the district. You know, we're looking back to the workforce housing, um, multifamily residential. And this is essentially, as I understand it, Andy, I mean, this, this is the. This is primarily the quantitative review of this. I mean, we, we've been doing this quantitatively. You know, we get a submittal, we look at the ordinance, we look at the constraints of the ordinance, you know, and here we are with density of development, but. It, again, Andy, I just, and I'm not trying to get stuck on this, but the density of development, you know, they, they, you know. As we got into at the last board hearing, it's not the board's purview to, you know, determine if it should be six or five, you know. Um, families on the property, I mean, they, we've gone through the, the math on that. You know, we're, we're looking that they did the math, they had the submission identified. And then relative to the broader context of density of development, you know, they've got additional submittals. Keying it back into observations in the. In, in the district, so. But, you know, you know, again, we're talking about a single lot, multi-families. On one lot and, you know, how, you know, I guess I'm just struggling, how do we? Get a finding on that the density of development is compatible with the, with the proposed use. In the district and so we're, you know, because I want to make sure we're also comparing apples to apples that we're not just. You know, looking at the broad density in the district, we're, we're talking about a single lot, single developments. And can we really key that into a density study of when we're looking at broader areas across multiple properties and want to. Make sure that we've got what we need to aim at to have a finding on this.
Think I understand what you're wrestling with. Permit me this observation. When you do site plan reviews for a single residential structure. Density development is not as complicated.
No.
This is a whole lot more interesting. Because it's using a provision of your subdivision ordinance. That was put there for a reason and designed to be used. And I've heard two types of testimony. Uh, as I've listened carefully to both the board's deliberation, the applicant's presentation, the interested person's presentation. The general public comments that we heard at the public hearing. And that is, on one hand. The community needs affordable housing and there's a formula for how you can get there. On the other hand, there's this tension because there's lots of neighbors that have shown up in this proceeding. And they're really worried about whether this specific development is compatible with their neighborhood. But you just seized upon something that I think shows that you are. Grinding right into this, um, and that is, it says permitted uses within the district. In which it is located as measured in terms of its physical size, so. Proposed use typically when we're talking about a proposed use, we're not talking about entire subdivision. Um, and multifamily, what I call a developmental subdivision, kind of tests. What you're working on with density of development, but it is a term that can have meaning in two contexts, both. The single family residential dwelling that you might do as part of the site planner view or office use. A single office use is part of, um, review. But remember, as I said at the outset, you're doing a conformance review. When you look at that term conform. I submit to you, anybody looking in the dictionary will find that conform doesn't mean exactitude or precision. It's not the same as it generally conforms. And so I think density development has to be written in the context of those two other subdivision standards. And when I was listening carefully to the last planning board meeting. The board was between five and six. And I think you said it pretty well tonight, which is. I don't think you're here to determine the exact number. I think you're here to determine the general conformity of the project with the general use standards and six A one is tough. But it's not that tough.
So when you. You know, so when you're doing a, a compatibility study like the, you know. This relative to other areas in, in town. And you've got a project type that is the first out of its gate within that district. You know, I, again, I'm, I'm struggling. To get some wayfinding here and how you review that, that compatibility with the district when it doesn't exist.
Well, there's, there's a first time for everything.
Yeah.
And the novelty of every application. Um, tends to push a more intensive review. You know, you're, you're, you're getting down into weeds, but I submit to you, you got this tension between the subdivision ordinance. Provisions were put there to allow. Greater density with workforce, because we want workforce housing. On the other hand, there are people concerned about, is this too much for our neighborhood? And I think what you have to say is. Come back to the evidence.
Yeah.
Uh, because you're applying a standard to the evidence. A lot of people think that the job of a planning board is to provide their personal preference for what they like. That's not your job. To take the standard of, of review and apply it to the facts, and I think. You sure can do a developmental subdivision in a residential neighborhood. And I think the applicant has labored pretty hard. And I think Meredith gave you the core elements of what I'm. Under this motion. To deal with density of development, physical size, visual impact and proximity to average structure, but she said. Essentially, the applicant through substantial evidence has demonstrated that the project is compatible as a matter of density of development. And so I think she's using the general.
Just sign in, ma'am.
She's using the general wayfinding concept that I think is in six A one and is what's intended by five point two because. Try as I might, Bill, I, I can't find that five point two is saying you must. Determine the same way you do with a single unit site plan review. That it's in conformance, because again, two thirds to three quarters of that provision is talking about the site location and development. So I think they're basically saying the conformance is a wayfinding exercise. It's, it's not.
No. Dave, can I put you on the spot and hear what you think?
Sure. There's definitely other areas in the district that have, uh, density greater than this. Um, they are on multiple lots, but. If you look at the area. I, I think you have to compare the areas, not, not the number of lots. Um, so I feel that, uh, that this is, the applicant has shown that. This is compatible with the neighborhood.
Is there any concern, Dave, on your end that? You know, we're talking about a single lot with multi-families on it, multiple families on it. In a, in a type of housing arrangement that. Doesn't necessarily translate exactly to the other. Density seen in the district, because you know, we're talking about other single family houses on so- separate single. Single lots and I know I just kind of restated your, your statement there, but. You know, do you, I guess, in some, do you feel like this is apples to apples? Uh, compatibility. Study.
Well, a- again, I, I'm looking at the area, not the lots. And the lauding of this neighborhood is done many, many years ago. Um, and at one time, the area that we're looking at right now was five individual lots. It, 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 it was in a subdivision that showed that heel, uh, property was consisted of five, five lots. So that's why I'm saying, I think you have to look at the area, not necessarily the number of lots.
The other thing I caution, um. Is that you really can't say if this is a permitted use within the district. That you're substituting your sense of compatibility for whether or not it's permitted within the district. So if that makes sense. So. Uh, if the ordinance, if the ordinances of the town shouldn't have opened up this particular, uh, subject parcel to this type of development. It should have been prohibited as a use within the district. And I, I guess what I'm saying about compatibility is I wouldn't use that standard to end run the question of whether it's permitted. Because you seem to be troubled by its multi-unit development. So that's another way I'd look at it.
On a single lot, right. Meredith, any thoughts?
Uh, I guess in, in the time that we've had between the meetings, uh, one of the thoughts that I've had is just the. Um, how much trouble we're going to run into with any development of workforce housing. That it's not, that it may not be specific to this lot, uh, that, and it is the density issue. And trying to make them compatible, the specific point of trying to create. Um, workforce housing is to make it affordable and, and the way that the town has chosen to do that is to. Open up higher density than generally what is found to so to. To say, we really need a workforce housing, so we're going to, in these specific. Situations, we will allow higher density. And then to turn around and say, is that compatible with everything around it? That's specifically why it's workforce housing, because it's supposed to be higher density than what's around it. And the fact that the applicant found compatible. Um, housing in the district. To me is, is impressive, but it's sort of inherent in what, what the town has created as code for. For allowing workforce housing is that, that they're allowed a higher density. That, that's how we make it affordable.
You know, I, I can't, you know, in the, you know, in the break between the thirteenth and now, you know, I was. You know, one question I had was, well, what's, is, is there a threshold of compatibility? You know, like what, what happens if that, you know, and I'm not trying to get off in the weeds here, but, you know. Where is the line in the sand? You know, like what happens if there was a, a ten acre lot in the VR one district? And suddenly we have, you know, I'm not doing the math quickly in my head, I'm just throwing a number out, but what after you had twenty houses? You know, on one lot, I mean, where? Where is the, the quantum viable line in the sand for making that determination of compatibility? When, you know, you're going through, you're demonstrating the math, you're demonstrating the family per. You know, area in, in the district. I mean, I guess this is maybe a, a, a larger. Question back to the goals of the establishment of the district and the comp plan, but you know, where. You know, what are the boundaries of that? I mean, are, you know, we could. You know, I just want to make sure we're, you know, we're, we're heading in the right direction here with this decision, because it's going to set a real precedent.
Yeah, but you're, the challenge of a planning board, when you're applying land use standards to an application. Is you don't think of every possible configuration that's going to hit you down the road. You think about the applications before you. And you've got an obligation to apply the standards. You're taking the planning component of the term planning board and saying that's what we're doing. I just want to remind the board that you are the municipal review authority in the context of the subdivision ordinance. The key word in that phrase is review.
Yes.
And if you're not doing planning, you're doing review.
I hear you, Andy, but we're also not just solely a process board, you know, and I think that the.
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Well.
Depending what you mean on, by being a process.
Well, I mean, when we get into these difficult areas of review and the land use ordinance. Which aren't so black and white as other sections of the ordinance, you know, I think of. You know, you know, all those years we struggled through the quarry ordinance, which was. A thin ordinance at best, and then on occasion we stumble across these sections of. Reviewing subdivision and land use ordinance where, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Fortunately, I was involved with a board. So I don't know.
Made me think that I, I, I may feel that it was a mistake for us to separate the Luso. Committee from the planning board, because I feel like we're, we are the ones who deal with the code and go through the minutia. Of it. And there's always this sort of like, well, the town voted for it. Well, we've, we've been to planning, to town meetings unless somebody. Flags an issue, everybody just says, yeah, yeah, you know, like, somebody thought about it, they've come up with a proposal. And generally the town is agreeable with, you know, somebody else put thought into this. We're the people who put thought into this code and how it works. Um, and I do have, I hope everybody who's. Objecting to this subdivision will look at the subdivision ordinance and these provisions. In the bigger picture, I have, have concerns of like, what if somebody came to us and says, you know, we want higher density? And we're going to do multi, multiple or duplexes on it and we're going to add accessory dwellings. Like you can pound all of these things and, and there are things in our ordinance that are like, people, people who. Have a hard time, uh, affording living here. Wouldn't it be great if they could build a little rental or they could have their in-laws? So we should allow accessory dwellings and duplexes are a good way to allow affordability, but nobody's thinking that they're going to pile them all up on top of each other. You know, and, and there are things like that that we get exposed to as the board, like if somebody really tries to max out our code. Is our code going to allow it? And we just never thought of those scenarios. It wasn't what was expected. Um, and if people are objecting to this, do we have a problem? Do, are they having a problem with this section of the ordinance? I guess I, I keep on hearing it be referred to as just this lot. We can't. Review it as. An issue of just this lot. We have to review it as this is what the code says. Um, and if there's a problem, then it's a problem with the code is every single time. That a subdivision comes forward and says, we want to do a hundred percent workforce housing and therefore we get. Seventy-five percent increase in density. Is that always going to be a problem? And if that's, that's then, then that, that's a code issue and, and is a loser board. But if it's allowed, it's allowed.
I'm gonna take a comment from Mr. Burns.
I would just note, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing me. Uh, Brady Burns, uh, representing the Butters. Just, uh, I would note, uh, in regard to the previous discussion at the last meeting on this, uh, issue. The board covered a lot of ground regarding the quantitative standards for density for this property. Uh, including the calculation for the bonus, uh, density requirement. Uh, my, my sense from the last meetings that there was, uh, largely consensus as to how that math worked out. I understand if, uh, the board, uh, opts to review that quantitative standard in a different section of the support notes. But, uh, I would encourage you to look at those standards, uh, those provisions of quantitative standards. As well as the record evidence, uh, we have submitted, uh, that includes, uh, discussion about the density of this lot. And issue to the rest of the surrounding area, uh, including, uh, the lot coverage, uh, ratio. Uh, the yearly double, um, what is in the surrounding area of the neighborhood, as well as we build out the, uh, perhaps three times larger than the area. In the surrounding area of the neighborhood. But I I understand if the board uh wants to take the uh this uh the quantitative density issue uh where it lives in the subdivision standard, but uh ultimately, if the board determines that the if the density requirement is not met, I would substitute that that per se would mean that it is incompatible. However, I understand if the board would like to discuss that where it sits in your.
Say it, Andy.
So I I think Attorney Burns just said it for you. He understands if you conduct the density um uh calculation in the context of where it lives in the subdivision order, because that's where it lives. I don't think it lives in the compatibility provision.
Yeah, so that's, that was the other thing I was going to ask. I mean, could we just project forward to um just quickly five, seven, two and five sixteen, just to get a sense of of how the density discussion.
Mr. Chairman, you want your cake and eat it too.
No, Andy, I'm trying to make
My concern is this.
Yeah.
This is already a long review.
Yeah.
If you keep toggling between provisions and six A, um, as you're trying to get through, as you said earlier tonight, through six A, then go over to th- those sections of five that you want to use as your acid test for compatibility, I guarantee you, we're going to be spending double to triple the time doing this review. So what I what I would do is try to use the organizational discipline you suggested earlier in the meeting and stick with the six A review.
Yep.
And then come back to um the section five standards. I think you can. Um, and I think all Meredith's motion uh or what I heard is the beginning of the motion was that the applicant through substantial evidence has demonstrated that the project is generally compatible as a matter of density of the law.
Should we use the the language of, I mean, if there were a motion to be made, shouldn't the language be really keyed in specifically to
It has to be keyed into the standard.
I to the standard of six A one.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
Bill, you haven't asked Tracy where she is at.
I know, my apologies.
Well, um, I I I think I recognize all the different feelings and components have gone, you know, um into this, but I think we do really need to stick with the written word. So, um.
So perhaps we try to move the train down the tracks and work towards a motion here. And if there were a motion to be made that it's as specific as possible to the um standard we're currently pass with reviewing.
And again, because I think the board has identified what you think the evidence is to be considered. Um, and again, I think Meredith started to um move us down the road, but what we can do for conclusion of law is just stay based on the evidence. Does the standard matter or not? And then just read the standard. It's all right there in the standard.
On the application.
Well, say that again.
Say it again, Meredith.
I said all the the information, the statistics are in the application. You know, the the argument of how it's compatible with the district.
The proposed use shall be compatible with the permitted uses within the district. So we know, we know what the use is, we know what the district is. They've quantified, you know, the physical thought, physical size, visual impact, proximity, other structures. And they've quantified their density of development calculations and provided a study relative to the density of development within the district by area.
That, that, let's see, that they have, like you just said, uh.
That wasn't my motion for the record. Can can I tell you what I wrote down when you were talking earlier, Meredith, and see if it's applicable to you? The applicant through substantial evidence has demonstrated that the project is compatible with the permitted uses of the district as a matter of density of development, physical size, visual impact and proximity to other structures. That's the summary that I put together based upon what I heard you say earlier.
Yes, please.
Now I would need to review that again.
Yep, so this is what I'm hearing the board uh as you're processing, but you'll decide who actually says, yep, that's my motion. It it's the applicant through substantial evidence has demonstrated that the project is compatible. Uh, sorry, I'll go slower. And, yeah.
Has demonstrated that the
Project is compatible.
Okay.
With the permitted uses of the district. As a matter of density of development. Comma. Physical size, comma.
Yep.
Visual impact, comma. And proximity to other structures. Period. But can always be amended if there's anything you want to add or subtract.
Is that your motion, Meredith?
Oh, yes, that is definitely my motion, uh huh.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
All right, all those in favor, Mer? Yes.
So Meredith, Meredith moved and
All those in favor, Meredith?
I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
And myself, William Hanley, nay. So, three to one.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.
Let's soldier on through the rest of section six A. All right, section six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Perhaps the applicant for the record could key us into the plan submitted identifying erosion and sedimentation.
The erosion sedimentation control under exhibit eight, tab eight. Forcible provisions for stress creating control, you want to have there. First of all, um, and and including there is permanent stabilization, um, and temporary stabilization. You also find this exhibit ten, the plan, which also shows the uh storm water management erosion control measures to be implemented. So both things in each is specifications and related to the ten, you have the plan that shows the um measures to employ.
Any, any discussion on erosion and erosion and sedimentation control?
I understand what the board is reviewing. It's on pages six dash one. To the very top of six dash three, it's the entirety of six A two erosion and sedimentation.
Yeah, so I mean, just briefly, you know, that the soil erosion soil erosion plan is for unstabilized soil, you know, that they're not, you know, letting it run off onto other property. You know, they've got um mulching and revegetation, disturbed soil, they're dealing with runoff, permanent stabilization. The development fits the topography. You know, they're using um known erosion control measure, measures. Stabilization of their ground. You know, they've got drainage ways and out uh outlets. They're not really removing any sand or gravel. You know, the tilling of soil in a conservation district, you're not in a conservation district. You know, and they're not in the shoreline zone. So perhaps we could, if there's no discussion on section with a two erosion and sedimentation control, perhaps we have a motion on that.
Could you just uh remind Heidi me which section of the application was called out by the applicant?
Greg, could you mention that again, please?
Tab eight has specifications and exhibit ten, the plan, which is shown on the board here.
I'm gonna say it doesn't sound practical.
Oh, boy.
Eight and ten.
Eight and ten.
It doesn't sound practical.
And remember, we've got to keep our mics off out there in Zoom Zoom land. Meredith, I know you've got a motion and you know. Or Tracy?
Oh, I'll try it.
Go for it.
I'm just going to generalize and say, um, the components of six A two erosion and sedimentation control are uh addressed in the applicant's submission um under tab eight, erosion settlement management narrative of heelway subdivision. Okay. And tab ten. The heelway subdivision, site utility and geometrical geometric, geometric plan.
Actually, another plan I think that.
And the grading, erosion control and storm water management plan for heelway subdivision. Rating, grading, come erosion control and storm water management plan. For heelway subdivision.
Bill, can we have a reminder that the chat is not for conversations?
Absolutely. Let's please not do that. Do we got the motion on the table?
What I have is components of section six A two erosion and sedimentation control are described in tab eight and tab ten. Site utility and geometric plan and a grading erosion control and storm water management plan for heelway subdivision.
Which the standard has been met.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith?
Randall, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
And myself, William Hanley, I. Moving on to highway safety, section six A three. So highway safety, that talks about that the proposed use shall not cause unreasonable congestion on highways or public roads or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. Sufficient off-street parking shall be available. Greg, could you talk a little bit about that, please?
So um, there's a couple of elements of that. Um, I think we provided these two parking spots onsite for each family that has been shown um. In addition, for highway safety on the tab fourteen, the second page in tab fourteen, if you want to pause to go there, you might see what I will point you towards next. That's in the application. It's like page ten fourteen in the back.
The site photos?
Uh, no, it should be tab fourteen, traffic impact assessment, tab fourteen.
Tab fourteen.
Who performed the traffic impact?
You on the first page of that report?
Yes.
If we flip over to the second page of that report, um, what you'll see is that for this amount of housing, you would have four cars exiting in the morning. In the peak hour, that's four additional cars exiting onto the public way and in the evening uh four entry. So um, that's four additional cars. Is that consistent with unreasonable traffic? For your work, and so I think that's where to do in the the board's deliberations.
Meredith, Dave, any questions about highway safety, traffic?
Off-street parking.
And off-street parking?
No, it's pretty pretty clear in the application.
Maybe it's Dave's turn to make a motion.
Yeah. Mr. Burns says his hand up.
Meredith, Danny, why don't you get a motion first and then you can uh talk for discussion of the motion.
All right. Meredith, any uh, any comments? Any motion? Back to where Meredith and Dave are.
Can you hear me? Am I coming up now?
I can see you now, too.
Hi. I would, I would say that the applicant has shown uh uh off-street parking and um through their traffic study have shown uh minimal impact to the highway tra- highway safety uh and standard.
That maybe the applicant has provided um highway safety and off-street parking assessment per tab fourteen of the submitted application.
Yes, referencing tab fourteen, there was also, there's also, uh, it seems to me we need to reference the site that shows where the parking, that somewhere in here I saw.
Yeah, which plan, Greg, should we make a motion?
Parking to be on tab ten as well as first um plan in there.
And dude, uh, page forty-six of your submission of July fourteenth. Beyond the two parking spots per unit, you seem to be showing some additional internal um parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you have well dedicated parking spots for the units and you have six overflow.
Six, if required, off-site parking, so you know, almost a free per.
Off-street parking. Off street parking. You mean? Didn't she just say off site?
Uh, off street.
Off streets, okay.
Off street.
Yep.
So they've got, they've got essentially eighteen parking spots identified on site.
Do we have, has that formed into an adequate motion?
So if I can just suggest to the board, as you make the motions, just simply state whether there's evidence that you can call out later. Showing that the project meets the standard at section six eight three, so if you just simply say. The applicant through substantial evidence. Um, as detailed, as demonstrated that the project has met the standard at six eight three. I mean, and we should key in their submitted. Drawings, I mean, they've got. Yeah, you've called, you've called them out already, materials that are shown adequate off street parking at tab ten and page forty six of the supplemental suppression, yeah. All right, so we.
We're hiding. We're talking in circles.
That's why she's got so many pencils.
All right, uh, what I have is uh, including. Attorney Hamilton's suggestion through substantial evidence, the applicant has shown off street parking. Uh, and through traffic study, minimal impact to traffic safety. Applicant has provided off street parking and traffic. Assessment on tabs fourteen and ten and page forty six of the July fourteenth twenty twenty three submission. Uh, there is, I don't know if you need more, but I'm not talking about.
I thought that was an excellent summary of what the board members were stating, as long as it ends with. And 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 concludes that the standard at six eight three has been met.
It did say that somewhere in the ramblings.
You did.
Okay, so we've got the motion, is there a second?
Tracy.
More second.
Uh, they've got it.
Okay.
So now, is there any discussion of that? And Mister Burns has his hands up.
Uh, just note for the, uh, as the board reviews the standard, uh, contrary of the. Uh, competing uh, evidence before you have the butters on this issue, uh, Mr. Chair, you noted the supplemental materials that were submitted by the applicant. Showed overflow parking, um, that would accommodate up to eighteen vehicles. Uh, there's no evidence in the record that the uh, applicant intends to limit the amount of parking. Uh, that uh, individual uh, condo owners are allowed to utilize on the lot. There's no turnaround on the lot, um, and with eighteen vehicles, uh, parked, uh, up to eighteen vehicles, potentially more parked on that lot. Uh, they therefore will be required to back up on to be able to drive near feet from the corner. Uh, the app, the butters have uh, asserted in the record that that will be unsafe as a matter of the standard. Uh, and that there is in fact insufficient parking uh, on this lot. Thank you. Greg, um, Mr. Chairman, I would speak on the plan you have tab ten, um. There is an exhibit. Which is also copied on the plan here. Showing adequate backing out space of the vehicles. You need twenty four feet back out for standard. Um, the plan does provide contrary to what you just started, the plan provides evidence of backing out the vehicles within the site.
Could, could you just maybe? With your finger, just kind of describe, show for the record how you do that.
Sure, so. You have part here, part. These are deeper than let's say the parking, they're twenty plus feet, closer to have a twenty foot with tile. I mean, twenty four per aisle out here to back out and go out of here, out of the space. That's not what we just heard, this aisle. Just, I won't compare to a parking lot with that fluid design for, that exhibit is also in it, which shows. The parking has at least twenty feet to back out into to turn around your car.
Yeah.
Without using public water.
One, one question I had, so you've got two parking spots. Two dedicated parking spots for each unit and. And one overflow.
We showed if needed, there'd be one overflow, correct?
One overflow, so you've got essentially um, three per unit. Is, is there any kind of quantifiable requirement in the?
The, the order is used the term adequate.
That's a threshold, you know.
Been through that on many applications, uh, unlike where this quantitative per residential, one per residence is sort of universal standard.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I'll compare that to other towns in the, in, in the area, uh, two is not generally, and three is uh. Unheard of, but I think contrary to that, we do have.
Just to tune it up, Mister Johnson, the word used is sufficient. It's, it's um. Similar to uh, adequate, but if you. Tune your comments to the standard is sufficient off street parking should be available.
How do we quantify sufficient?
I think what you have to look at is um, the. As was pointed out, the traffic study will generally talk about. How many vehicles? Uh, are anticipated for this size development, um, you've heard endless. Uh, traffic engineering studies talk about um, the trip generation. Uh, for a development of a given type, this is a development of a given type, and it's in the IP manual. And I think I saw it in the traffic study in terms of what you expect, so. And if you look at the needs of the development and say, does it have enough parking? And I would, I would say that um. Mister Burns was quite appropriate in saying that there's competing evidence. Your job as a board is to sift through evidence that may compete. And uh, the reason I use the term substantial evidence as the court state is it's. Evidence sufficient to compel a reasonable. Um, decision maker to make a finding. Doesn't have to be. Um, overwhelming evidence, it doesn't have to, to rely strictly on. Uh, evidence that doesn't conflict, so when he said competing evidence. I think it's helpful to the board before it makes its final. Um, uh, decision on this motion. There is competing evidence and you're going to find that, as you already have in the context of compatibility. There's going to be, you know, two different views of, of what you've got for. For evidence. Your test is, do you have substantial evidence? And it's any evidence a competent decision maker would reasonably apply to reject finding. I do think the word sufficient isn't a great word.
Well, that's what I was talking about earlier, you know, where we try to. Avoid these qualitative needs and then you've got a term like that completely.
Right. That's where, that's where you and Meredith, I think, were correct earlier, and that is, you're pointing out. To ordinance review committee, to town meeting, there's some things that probably could be done better in the ordinance. And that you're awesome, but. You, you, you can't plan ahead for what the legislative body is going to give you tomorrow, you've got to take what the standard is today.
Now, yeah, so. That's kind of the end where we sidetrack, you know, just. Not being solely a process board, but now we gotta like step in from there.
Yeah, but you don't, in the review of this application, you actually don't have to figure out what the ordinance should say, you're just. Essentially giving notes to people like the code ops or like the.
Yeah.
Uh, folks who are present here who do interface with town meeting, then yeah, there's some terms here that, you know, we got to apply, we have no choice, but. Cause you're doing a project review, but.
We gotta do some way finding, figure out what that term means.
Yep.
And. You know, I think that transcends process a bit.
Yep. But you can take lay evidence, you can take expert evidence, you do have a choice as to how you take the evidence that apply to this.
So Greg, could you please again, for the record, just summarize the evidence submitted attesting to section six eight. Three highway safety.
So. First part, first part is that you've, you've got a peak generation of six total.
Trees. We had the traffic study.
Have the traffic study.
Yeah.
And you have um, two plans which show um. Off street parking and space that can be backing out of, one is page forty six of the supplemental, middle and the other one is the. Uh. Creating a new plan that is in tab ten. And I'll also submit to the board that. The purpose of being in a village district is to hopefully be able to walk to work, which is part of the sort of workforce initiative. And these data points are based on everybody having a car and driving every day. Um, and understanding our goal as increased housing where opportunities for construction. From work is. Part of the underlying goal. Sure.
Yes.
I would just. The extent that the applicant is, is presenting you with additional argumentation. Uh, it's not, you know, if you had a direct question to the applicant, which was what evidence have you submitted that was responsive to the standard? I would uh, just ask that the board uh, refrain from considering extraneous evidence submitted by the applicant at this point, uh, during their deliberation.
The record is closed, we are in deliberations, and I would encourage both. The applicant and attorney burns for the interested persons to just. Answer the direct question from the board, because it is in deliberations and don't argue, and. Both sides are doing it, but, 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 but it's correct to say, it, when you ask a direct question deliberations, all you need is the answer to the direct question, don't argue it.
So in the context of sufficient, they're providing two parking spots per. Per unit with one overflow parking onsite with eighteen spots in total onsite. And that the applicant had, and then. Dimensionally clarified the. The parking spots. The, the, the physical size of the parking spots and the physical size of the driveway, which. You know, from the parking, from that explanation that they would be pulled backing out. If they did pull straight into a parking spot and that they would have a double lane driveway to do a three point turn and, and pull out. That they wouldn't necessarily be relegated to backing out on neighborhood road. Can we go back to the page with Dave and Meredith on it? She's, where is she?
No.
Oh.
Yep. If I just make noise, I'll come back up.
All right. Dave, you want to make some noise? No.
Hello.
So we have motion. Are you, you just, we're just.
I'm just seeing if there's any further discussion from you guys on this. Meredith, you sound like you're set, Dave. Are you set?
Yep, I'm all set.
Tracy, you're set.
Yeah.
Mister Burns, are you set?
I would. I would note in our submission, uh, noting that if overflow parking is utilized, those back, those turnaround spaces would not be available. Uh, again, the application does not demonstrate there would be any indication on parking. They are proposing affirmatively to have people as overflow park along the sideways. With no way to turn around if in fact they need to utilize overflow space. As designed, uh, the butters assert and continue to assert that this is insufficient. To provide for safe ingress and ingress given the comfortability to neighborhood. That's contained in the record, and we simply reiterate that point.
Greg, could you speak to that just briefly, please? It seems like the, the overflow parking spots would have to pull into a regular spot to do a turn to get out.
I, I would say that would depend on which parking spaces are occupied at a time and whether or not they bark frontwoods or if they're all the same part. People come to your own driveway. They often double park.
Mm hmm.
And in a twenty foot wide lane, which is the road width, which is the same width you have at Walmart when you bark out. Is enough room to do a three point turn and back out. Nobody backs all the way out to Meyer Street from Walmart. That is the same thing.
I'm sure it might have happened that it was one.
That's. Park, correct, and you're saying it's a sixteen foot wide. Um, path, whatever driveway, and then four behind each car, so you have twenty feet.
It's, it, it's twenty four feet, isn't it?
Sixteen, and then you have four more feet behind each car, stable on each side.
So it, it would be twenty feet in the, in the areas where there's only. Where there's not a parking spaces, parallel to, you know, back to back.
Correct.
But there's the, there's a space, even if it's totally full. There's space for people to turn, do a three point turn.
That's what, that's what we have asserted and shown in the application dimensionally.
Okay, we've got the motion. We had discussion.
We have a second.
We did have a second, yes. So let's close the discussion and go back to the motion. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I.
All right, section six eight four, impact on town services. Propose you shall not duly burden the capacity of the town's facilities. Including public water and sewage or the ability of the town to provide essential public services. Such as, but not limited to schools, fire and police protection, refuse collection. And parking to its residents and visitors. Greg, you aim the board at a reference.
Thinking exhibit nine defines the capacity to stay in kind of um. This first.
Well, then.
Tab nine.
Tab nine. You've got the letter from Tony Smith, the former public works director, talking about the. Town hand, ha- having the correct capacity to handle municipal solid waste volume. And then you've got um. Ed Mont, if I'm saying it correctly, Ed Montague. Talking about that the um, town has adequate sanitary sewer capacity. And then we've got a letter from um, the elementary school. Looking forward to having additional kids in the school. So you got something addressed, you got a letter addressing public water and sewage and. The town's ability to provide essential public services.
I make a motion. That uh, the standards of. Six A point four. Um, have been met that they've shown minimal. Uh. Minimal impact on the town services, um, including. Uh, utilities. Uh, the schools, hopefully enhancing the schools. Uh, minimal impact on fire, police protection and refuge collection. Uh, as their residents, nothing's. Out of typical standard. So the standard has been met.
That was a heck of a moment. That was a heck of a mouth motion.
Trying to make them more involved for you.
Let me let Heidi finish writing and know.
Uh, standards of six eight four have been met. It shows minimal impact on town.
Here's a suggestion. What you don't want to do is freelance from the language of the standard. And when you use terms that are different than the standard. Um, uh, somebody reviewing your decision could say, well, they really weren't talking about the standard. So. If you can just look at the ordinance standard as you make the motion, I think that's going to be best. But it's also to me wholly adequate if Meredith is just saying. The standard of section six eight four has been that as.
As evidence in tab ten of the.
Not not.
Tab nine of the application.
Yep, that's helpful. Just for form. Motion, yeah, yeah.
No, I said the uh just. The impression that wasn't good last time.
No, you got it now, Meredith. That's perfect.
Okay, so standards of six eight four have been met as evidenced in tab nine of the application. Is that all we want?
How's that sound, Meredith? Right.
Second.
Right. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I.
Um, would be any objections for like a five minute recess.
Good idea. Get yourself some water. Yes, and others will have that chance. What do you guys think about a five minute recess?
I'll make a motion to have a five minute recess.
Now, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith? Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. All right. All right, let's get back to it. We're back to our five minute recess and here we are motoring through section six of the land use ordinance. Uh, we just completed section six A four impact on town services and now we're into. Section six eight five land suitability and if. You could just bear with me through story time here. I'm gonna just read what that's speaking about and that's. So six eight five land suitability and that talks about where all uses are to be on suitable soils, all land uses. Shall be located on soils in or upon which the proposed uses or structures can be established and maintained without causing. Adverse environmental impacts, including severe erosion, mass soil movement, improper drainage. And water pollution, whether during or after construction. Says that proposed uses requiring subsurface waste disposal. Uh, we don't have that. You guys are on town sewer. You know, and that, you know, it talks about if they're needed certified persons may. Include the soil, main certified soil scientists, registered professional engineers. In main states, geol certified geologists, um. You know, and that the um, there should be a report be based on analysis of characteristics of the soil and surrounding land and water areas. Maximum ra groundwater elevation, presence of ledge drainage conditions and other pertinent data which the evaluator deems appropriate. And the soils report shall include recommendations for proposed use to counteract soil limitations where they exist. Greg, you being a main registered professional engineer and the agent, perhaps you could speak to that.
Sure, under um, so first um. Some soils reported in there, but I I didn't want to make the breakers of proposed uses requiring subsurface disposal. Commercial or industrial development. Uh, shall include, uh, shall require soil force. So. I think there's a prerequisite on there, even though I will um, I will endeavor to show you the soils analysis, I think. Um, that you describe as specific to subsurface, commercial or industrial.
Right, and we're on town sewer.
And we're on town sewer, so. But we will point you to tab um. Sixteen, at least, have sixteen in. He did have thirteen in that back. You'll have a report on soils that. That were there moderately well drained. You tap to seventeen and tab back to the description of the Lyman's complex and descriptions.
But within your tab sixteen storm management. You talk about the uh predeveloped soil conditions.
So what we're also uh indicate, so the 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 soil report and descriptions are there that indicate the. Marking well drained soils in the report under the developed conditions, you'll see. That test bits were dug throughout the site, last paragraph, second um. Um, second paragraph, second last sentence. Uh, spring two thousand twenty three, several test bits are dug throughout the site. The purpose was to assess seasonal high groundwater table. Um, for stormwater retention and ledge, um, no ledge was encountered. Uh, then it further describes how. These stormwater measures were designed around the soils to the site uh to uh sure that we have. Intertration and detention above those elevations, uh, but they could have. At least two. Locations in tab sixteen that talk about the soils. Um, and when we talk about soils appropriate for residential development, um. Evidence by not only the resident grounded, but also um. In one second investigation of the test bits of black ledge. And also that's my power and so on, whatever.
Out of curiosity, what kind of soil is Lyman? Tidbridge complex.
Well.
Who 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 did the soil work?
Greg, who did the soils work?
I we did the soils test of work. It's fine sandy loom.
Fine sandy land. Kim, could we scroll back to where Dave and Meredith are?
Nice.
Dave, Meredith, any questions on six eight five land suitability?
I'm all set.
I have no questions.
Tracy.
I'm all set, awesome.
I make a motion that the standard of six A point five. Um, have been mess. Um. As shown in the application.
As shown in tabs sixteen.
Yes.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Right, section six eight six lighting outdoor. I'm not going to read all of section six eight six. We're gonna be here for quite a while, but um, yeah. So that that's the purpose of section six eight six. It's to establish minimum requirements for outdoor lighting that enhances. Visibility and public safety by preventing uncontrolled intrusion into adjacent properties and the natural environment. Voluntary best practices are recommended to promote. Promote energy conservation, preserve the town's night sky, which is an important part of the town's character. Do you like to talk about proposed lighting?
Though there's no 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 blood lighting. First, I pointed to tab fifteen. That fifteen show that the those lights are fully shielded um. On the exterior, you can't directly view the view the ball. Um, the other lights, it would be up under recess um, under the deck, same condition. Um. The specs included the dark sky um from the lights. That's part of the specifications and then relative to the. Uh, trespass, each manufacturer provides um their photometrics. You have a plan on the tab fifteen that shows the wood candles uh at what point they reach uh less than point one by. Book candles, excuse me, point one book candles uh consistent with the ordinance. So you have some. Evidence on the existing uh in cap fifteen to.
Yeah, the under tab fifteen, we're looking at a lighting plan for the. World Development showing just the light distribution from the exterior fixtures and. It's not going over the property line. It's all shielded downlights.
It's as that and I don't know if it in the code of how it's whether it's on motion sensors or. Or is it just simply switched?
I think the uh, the, sorry, we got a question.
Yeah.
The um, last section of six six says recommending best spending practice and non-important symptoms of the ordinance. That section may recommend motion sensors, um. I don't know that we indicated either way, um, but it's the code officer, um. So not give rise to any project, but they recommend these things. So. Um, I would say the application is silent on that, um, then though it has met, um, this was an examiner.
So you really have only two lighting types outside. You have the recessed downlights and then you have this Fredericksburg. Scorned like the wall lantern.
Correct.
Any questions, guys, on the lighting plan? In section six eight six.
Would you like a motion?
Go for it.
Make a motion that the standards of six A. Point six have been met uh in reference to or in the application in section fifteen.
I don't stand angels on the head of a pen, but um. Six A six. Subsection six. You might want to be excluded from the motion unless you find that. You want the dialogue with your applicant as to whether any of those things as to recommended best practices. You're curious about it. It's clear it's not enforceable. I I I gotta tell you, Andy, I don't think we've ever excluded that from section six A six. But it does say they're recommended um best practices. There are sense like D N Ps, best practices and. It's it's an interesting part of the ordinance. It says they're not enforceable. You know, in terms of our ordinance, um, this is probably one of the most quantified sections of the entire order. Except when you get to six, yeah, that's my point.
What subsection was that, Andy, one more time?
Subsection six, recommended best practices.
Six A six.
Yeah, but Andy. Section six. Andy, it's as they as they drill down through and kind of quantify section six, I mean, we've got. A lot of specifics there about motion sensors, LED D lights, color temperature. Non-security parking lights, minimum amount of lighting. You know, the importance of shielding and um, you know, flushing out lights, signs and flags and guidelines for professional design. I. Remember when Dwight was crafting this, I thought it was, you know, fantastically specific.
Weird.
What what I'm trying to understand is if this is a.
All right.
If this is a project that is um trying to fit within the fabric of the ordinance. Um, although these aren't enforceable standards, you can go one of two ways. You can either say it's part of your motion. We didn't get any evidence. That these recommended best practices are in any way being addressed. Well, actually, they did, and it's evidenced in their fixture selections. Okay, okay. So some of them were, I I thought I heard is the applicant um agent called out. Satisfaction of six eight six that. Um, that there was no. Um. Satisfaction of six, if that's not the case, I missed her.
So let me, you gotta go back to that. I'm reading through these, even though they're not um. So let's just talk about motion sensors. That's specific to control flood and spotlight should be considered for.
And you're not using.
We have presented water spotlights.
Okay.
The LED lights, twenty seven hundred color correlated temperature is in fact. Not part of our specification, so we actually comply with that as well. Uh, non-security parking lights, we indicate we're not flooding parking our lights, so we comply with that. Uh, the minimum amount of lighting, um. To achieve safe, I think we've addressed that by keeping them under mounted to the decks and also to shield it fully from the house. We haven't. Tried to light up the site. You think the houses themselves have um light. And then none of the other ones, well, it's children flush now, comply with that, signs, flag, proposing that. And the guidelines we use to develop the other um, the photometrics are G. So. As much as they're not recommended, I think we comply with those, um, when we actually get into E P L stuff. So. We don't, I'm very different on how the boardwalk set handle it in any sort of discussion.
So I would agree with Meredith's motion and I would agree with your point. You have not typically excluded six. I don't think you need to in this instance. I was just wanting to understand if fit with an existing residential neighborhood. Some of these best practices might be helpful, but um, I think your motion covers it. I take it back. All right, so we.
You have a motion, no second. Tracy Keller, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. All right, moving on to storm water, six A seven, and just um. Again, I'm not going to read all of this, but just the um, the purpose of section six eighty seven storm water is that the. Direct discharge of storm water from ditches, swales and developed sites, the streams and lakes contribute contribute to water pollution. Because storm water can contain. All kinds of things. Storm water can also damage roads, ditches, culverts and other drainage structures that are not designed or sized to accommodate storm flows. These problems can worsen when an undeveloped woody site is cleared for developments in storm water. That was previously intercepted by vegetation absorbed into the ground is allowed to flow more freely across and off of the site. The closer the post project storm water flows are kept to pre project conditions. In terms of volume, rate, timing and gluten load, the less likely that storm water will damage the site. Or public or private property or cause harm to water bodies. Greg, could we talk about storm water, please?
Sure. So you'll find tab ten has some stormwater in the reading plan. That's going to show you um. Specific catch phases of the pipe networks. I mean, collectively. Ron was pointing just north of the existing residence. It's basically a rain guard where. Ron is collecting a lot to filtrate through uh bark mulch sand to collect particulates before it continues on. Um, the lower end of the parking area is actually curbed pavement, so. A large diameter aggregate with no fines and um. Below grade storage in the terms of capacity. Um, has been incorporated in the plan and then of course vegetated buffer um is dedicated, it's like a forty five foot buffer. With a minimum of thirty five foot is recommended. So the plan shows the measures and. Under tab sixteen, um, you'll find the recording and methodologies on. Sizing of the storm water, um, and how the. Smaller subretention areas reduce the velocity flow and. Mirror pre-developed, uh, conditions, so you have the plan, you have, uh. Have sixteen to consider.
So in, in some, you guys are collecting stormwater and putting it into the town stormwater system.
We are collecting storm and encouraging it to infiltrate in many places on the site. Yeah, by including the rain garden and then we have, uh, uh, underground storage in the parking itself. And then if that is above and beyond, we use vegetated buffer. To disperse from concentrated flow to sheet flow, which the ordinance recommends as well.
Right, but are you connecting to the towns?
No.
There's no storm. You're keeping it, you're keeping it all on site. And that's, the, that's. Tab ten in the application. Going C one.
Tab ten or tab sixteen?
Tab six, the report and tab ten.
Yeah. Any questions, Dave? Nope, I'm all set. What do you think, Meredith?
I make a motion that the standards of. Sorry. This six A point seven is it? Have been, uh. Met in reference to tab ten and tab. Sixteen as well as the. Grading erosion control and stormwater management plan provided in the application. And the standard has been met.
What do you think, Heidi?
Uh, standards of section six A seven have been met in reference to tabs ten and sixteen. As well as the grading and erosion controls plant, the control plan submitted in the application. What I have.
Alright.
Tracy Keller, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hamley, aye.
Question six A eight. There you go. Section six A eight is vegetation and just a couple of things there with that is that, um. Clearing, clearing of trees or conversion to other vegetation is allowed for permitted construction. Provided that appropriate measures are taken if necessary to prevent erosion when activity is undertaken. And two, the activity is in conformant conformity with section sixty three. Clearing or removal of vegetation for active activities other than timber harvesting. Uh, tree removal near town or state roads. Says that removal of more than twenty five percent of the trees within twenty five feet of any town or state road in any twelve month period. Shall require a conditional use approval of the planning board. It also says that other woody plants must be retained or replaced with native species. Then, uh, point three talks about slash, no accumulation of slash, nobody left within fifty feet of any town or state road. And then again, references section sixty three. Greg, could you talk about vegetation, please?
Foreign vegetation is for permitted uses. Is allowed. One, uh, current trees, current levels are allowed for temporary use. Residential development, single and two families is a permitted use in the district. Uh, so on this thing, A one, I, I think we provide it says appropriate measures are taken to prevent soil erosion control. That correlates into tab eight. Which we provided stringent specifications that should so be disturbed that you would prevent. Erosion as required by six A one, so. Yes, we have evidence that the tree clearing is for permitted uses being residential. Do up one of the evidence on a tab eight that road control specifications are met. And then, um. The latter section, which, uh, I know the chair was paraphrasing, um. Can't clear more than twenty five percent of trees on public way, except for those permitted construction, which we provide for. Um, there is, uh, several trees to the left and right at the entrance which are to remain, um. And we have applied, I think, what is the attitude is in water management, erosion control plan for flow. There are permitted uses and I think you have evidence to consider of whether or not, uh, soil, um. Sedification has been addressed.
And, uh, the section six B three is. Not applicable because we're not in the shore. What, what was said with respect to standard two? The applicant is or is not removing more than twenty five percent of the trees within twenty five feet of any town or state road in any twelve month period.
That's for those required to be permitted construction.
Was there any calculation?
Uh, we haven't provided calculations, but I believe along the road. The trees are staying, um, you can see on the plan, we have a tree line shown on. Have ten. And you can see the trees against along the road because they're within the setback. Aren't necessarily, they're reserved the oats. Uh, along front and the apple trees along entrances. If you can see the.
Yeah, tab twelve is the landscape. Any questions, Meredith?
I don't have any questions.
Dave?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Tracy?
I'm all set, looks like we're retaining lots of trees.
Uh, so I make a motion that the standards of six. Uh, A eight, uh, are being met. In reference to the application of. In section.
Twelve and, um. Eight, ten and twelve.
Uh, and the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Hey, Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hamley, aye.
So last section of section six is six A nine. Dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. What that talks about is, uh, emission of dust, fly ash, fumes, vapors, odors or gases which could damage human health, animals, vegetation and property. For which could soil or stain persons or property. At any point beyond the lot line of the establishment, creating that emission shall comply with the applicable. Federal and state regulations. And what tab should we?
That A, you'll find, um, so the end results in projects, because we're not trying to produce any, uh. Uh, fly ash, fumes, vapors, odor and gases which could damage human health, so. Long term, uh, the project is not proposed, proposed to produce any of those. You will find in a tab A, um, control for dust in the form of a water truck. Um, necessary to keep dust down throughout construction under the erosion control specification, I think, um. Addressed, uh, that shall it does.
Dave, Meredith? Any questions?
I'm all set.
Tracy?
I'm all set too. Think the stand, I make a motion that the standards of six A nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. The standard has been met based upon evidence, um, set forth in the report at tab eight.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Mer- Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hamley, aye.
Alright, we made it through section six. Six B could be easier. I think six should be much easier. Cause half of it doesn't even apply. So you just go down through and find which ones are not. Absolutely, so. Section six B one agriculture is N A. Six B two reserved. That is. N A.
What, I'm sorry, six B two is what?
It says reserved. So some future thing, I guess.
Was there landing strips?
Yeah. Six B three beach construction. And a. Six B four boat storage. That talks about no boat in excess of twenty four feet in length should be stored or parked on any residential property. Did that N A? Are we?
That is N A.
Yeah. Six B five. Uh, campgrounds, N A. Six B six, probably the first relative one is, uh, sixty six is driveway construction. And, and what that talks about is that driveways that provide primary access from the public or private way to a building. Shall hereafter be located, constructed and maintained in such a manner that there is minimal potential for erosion. Adequate provisions shall be made to prevent soil erosion, sedimentation. And shall meet the following construction standards, minimum width for right away or strip. Of land use for access to twenty feet, the minimum travel surface width is twelve feet. The minimum of unobstructed width is fourteen and a half feet and the minimum vertical clearance is fourteen and a half feet. And that's so emergency vehicles can get through. So. Greg, would you like to talk about the driveway construction?
Drive construction, you find it under tab ten. Plan. Shows if it. Exceeds all of the medical standards, it will probably have sixteen feet with. Four foot stabilized shoulder. And more than twenty foot clear width. That's on the left inside of the plan on tab ten.
The detail in the upper left hand corner. Any questions, guys, on driveway construction? Including perhaps attorney burns if he has any.
We would note, uh, our continuing objection, uh, or I should say, uh, the. Uh, what we put into the record regarding the applicability of the world standards, these would be the driveway standards. Um, and the record, uh, documents that we submitted, uh, to that point. Uh, I'd also point to the, uh, the unobstructed width of the road being fourteen point five feet. I would again encourage the board to look at the overflow parking, uh, diagram, uh. And determine whether or not the applicant has been able to demonstrate that they actually intend for that travelway to be. Unobstructed to that extent, given what they have proposed for overflow margin. Uh, but again, uh, primarily, uh, our position here is that this application should be subject to the world standards. Of, uh, this work.
Greg, would you like to speak to that?
You can see that the vehicles shown on the overflow width are. Beyond sixteen foot traveled way, they're, they're into the grass stabilized shoulders, so. Our position is that we continue to provide that adequate width in the plan. Um, there are other provisions in the ordinance which are also addressed, um. Were greater than the total wide, we have a, we actually have a road width or accessway equal to the subdivision ordinance. In a two-way street, so.
So the, the overflow parking is not ob- of obstructing the fourteen and a half. But. Horizontal distance or vertical distance.
That's not what, that's not what the issue we give you has shown.
It, it is not, it's not, yeah. Dan?
To address, uh, Dan Plegy, um, to address the last point that attorney Plegy. The, uh, land use only ordinance defines driveway as weak or track consisting of bad exposure, mineral, oil, gravel. Asphalt or other surfacing material constructed for, or created by the repeated passage, by the repeated passage of motorized vehicles. Serving not more than two lots, as the board knows and has found of a development application. Uh, the contemplates one single lot, uh, that's a kind of a.
Did you also address attorney Plegy the definition of the term road under the land use order?
Sure.
Hi there, it's me, I've got the zoom on. And I have no sound, this is typical of what I'm left with over here. But anyway, I see everybody and I'm watching. And I have no idea what the outcome will be, will you call me if you hear?
Thank you.
Answered Mr. Hamilton's question, the same ordinance defines road. As a weak or track consisting of bad of exposed minerals, oil, gravel, asphalt. Or other surfacing material constructed for or created by the repeated passage of motorized vehicles. Excluding a driveway as defined.
So your, your, your view attorney Plegy is that this is a driveway because it doesn't serve. Two or more lots.
Doesn't serve more than two lots, great. Doesn't serve more than two lots, right?
Attorney Burns?
It butters reiterate their position that has been stated repeatedly in our submissions. That the definition of a lot includes the parceling off legal interest of sufficient dignity. To create a discrete ownership interest. That is clearly met by the creation of discrete condo units that will be owned exclusively by individuals. We will have six groups of owners on this law or one previously existed. Therefore, under clearly applicable state law, six lots are being created here and the road standards apply. You can refer to our gene submission for additional information.
Okay, so attorney Paly. Thoughts on whether six of the ownership units constitute six separate lots?
Well, so the board already addressed this, Mr. Hamilton, with the public hearing and subsequently. The board has previously found that under this condominium development that only one lot is being created. There are condominium units that are defined by the boundaries of the buildings. And then they all they're situated on a on the single block. The the board took notice of a previous legal opinion by its council. By the municipal council, finding under similar development condominium development. That for land use zoning ordinance purposes, only one lot was created and driveway standards apply. The driveway definition.
Can you address yourself to the definition of a lot, attorney Paly?
A lot is defined by the ordinance and say a partial land. Described on a deep plot or similar legal document, is all continuous land within the same ownership. Provided that lands located on opposite side of the public private road should be considered as a separate parcel. Yeah, and it goes on to talk about. Dates of establishment. And then we go to a lot area and lot coverage.
So I don't think you need a final ruling from me, but I think if the two positions are clear and. In my view, I don't think we've got the prerequisite for. Taking you outside of a driveway to be a road generally, but it's really. For the board to decide, I I find that when you use either plan the unit developments or condominiums. You're dividing interests in real estate. But you're not creating thereby lots or separate tracks.
I I believe there's examples in town too of other condominium developments where was not considered a road.
The thing I would say to the board and to the applicant is be sure you look at the condo documents. To make sure that a competent condominium declaration is submitted as part of materials. That we have a debate early on and I just don't remember if. You've received in your application materials, the condominium documents, I I believe we have.
Yes, we've submitted.
But actually the question is, is this a driveway or is this a road as to any of the? Rates of access on this property, I think that meets the definition of a driveway because it's. Not two or more lots being served, but I think. You don't really have to determine title questions and you don't absolutely have to do anything other than take your definitions and your land use ordinance. And apply them, that doesn't mean you will dispense with any legal argument that's being made by attorney during their by attorney. But your job really is to apply the definitions in your ordinance and. You don't have to get into a lot of detail on this, I think. Here that speaks for itself. Meredith, Dave? Any thoughts?
No, I'm all set. At as far as I'm concerned, it's a driveway.
Seems consistent with. What we've done in the past that is driveway.
Tracy?
I can see it as a driveway. And.
I would agree, we've got other precedents in town where condominium and condominium, I can't say that. Condos are other properties that have been condominiumized. And they're considered as driveways.
Any further thoughts, Meredith?
No, I'm I'm happy to make a motion if. We can reference again which sections are we referring to?
We're tab A. Ten, sorry.
So. Wow, I totally lost my words. The standards of six B point six driveway constructions. Has been met in reference to the application. Evidence in section ten, the application.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Okay, so section six B seven. Excavation other than gravel pits or filling. That talks about where excavation or filling shall be permanent in any district. To the extent such such activities are essential or incidental to any permitted victim or other lawful use. Thoughts on that, Greg?
The board should consider that the excavation is associated with. The home construction and the insulated utilities are permitted uses on table three five. There's no excavation being proposed, is not allowed use in table three five. Second question, you consider the webinar, you have appropriate evidence of erosion control.
We've been through a rushing withdrawal, that's to have a.
You did you say three five or I'd say three four? So it's the permitted uses under table three four. Maybe the last one for you tonight, Mr. Titans. Any questions, Dave, Meredith? Maybe a motion?
Was it six eight? Section six, sorry, section six?
Sixty-seven.
Six B seven, but in the the application, the references.
Tab eight.
So. The standards of B point seven excavation. Has been shown to either be. All be in reference to the construction of the permitted use and. The erosion control plan has already been has been reviewed in another section. So and and evidence of. In the application is in section eight, such that the standard is met.
Section six B seven excavation or filling. As evidence in tab eight of the application has been met.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so the. The standard of section six B seven excavation or filling as evidenced in the. Application in tab eight has been.
Tracy Keller, second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. And if the applicant doesn't object, the chair feels absolutely crying. If they would, well, I think we would. Well, I think we would need to make a motion to table to a date. Continue and that dates certain nights, I would suggest is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? I gotta see if rooms are down. Like Wednesday, you said?
I work for attorney burns and attorney Paly and the applicant's team generally. That would be at six P M.
Do we, do any of the rest of the sections of six B apply because we could wrap this up? I think it's, there isn't anything.
Yeah, there's fences and walls. Then you're gonna get back into it with lots again. I call it a night. Yeah, Meredith, I really feel. Good teamwork by the board tonight, yes, so we covered a lot of good work.
I said before, I just think it must be gonna be in here.
Actually grateful to develop for ending a day here. When you arrive home. Drive safe. Ready to drive home. Yeah, exactly, car knows the way. Right, so I guess we need a motion to. Continue the review. Continue the review until October eighteen at six P M.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to continue the review until next Wednesday, October eighteenth at six P M. At which time we'll reconvene.
All right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith?
I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Thank you.